Good evening. I'm the first electman Carol Jones here with Dwayne Gates, Catherine Russell. I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for November 28th to order at 6:42, a little late due to technical difficulties. First thing on the agenda is to approve minutes from two regular meetings. One is November 14th, so I need a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November 14th, 2023.
And I will second.
I'll be abstaining because I wasn't at that meeting.
Yeah, okay. So meetings all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then the second meeting, September 26th. Catherine and Carol were in attendance, Dwayne was not, so...
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from September 26th.
Okay, a second.
All in favor? Aye.
Abstaining.
Yep. Okay, Audience of Citizens, looks like we have quite a lot of residents here. For the record, if you could state your name, if you're going to make any comments, and then we're going to give everyone a maximum of five minutes to speak to the board. Anyone like to say?
I would just like to offer my congrat- Carmella Balugi. I would like to offer my congratulations to our first woman elect in the town of Deep River.
Thank you.
Second.
There was actually a...
1979.
Okay, I was not here then.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to say one quick thing.
Yeah.
Congratulations to Carol and Catherine, looking forward for the next two years, spending twice a month together for the Board of Selectmen, and to work forward for the town to keep it moving forward. So congratulations to both of you, looking forward to working with both of you.
Thank you. Next item is some appointments. Yeah?
Jackie, did you have something to say?
Well, I'm Jackie Nash, and I came along because I did run for the Library Board, which I did not get, but I'm willing to fill in the vacancy for the two-year vacancy, so I came. I need to tell you a little bit about myself. We've been in Deep River for about 43 years now. My kids all grew up here, went through all the schools here, and graduated. Now they have their families in the dorm where they went. My husband and I are still here, so I'm retired now. I have more time to use and would like to get back into the library. I had no need to be going to the library when I was working and juggling things, but now I am more interested in getting more involved with the library. I used to love it when my kids went there and moved there so often, and then, you know, as the progress went along, I kind of dropped out. But I'd like to get back into it because I've visited the library and it looks interesting now. So I'd like to offer whatever I can do as far as helping what the library needs with updates. I understand that sometimes you need people to search for grants. I'd like to get a lot of that, so I think.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay.
Jackie, did you want to share the benefits of board members?
And this is just a brief paper.
Okay, so we have some appointments to the Community Health Committee, sort of two-year term. We're reappointing Tracy Woodcock, Nancy McGee, and Joyce Barardis. Term to expire 12/1/2025 for all three, and I would like a motion to approve them and move them to the town meeting on December 11th for approval by the residents of Deep River.
So these are reappointments.
Just Tracy Woodcock, the other two are new.
I have not seen their resumes or gone through any of that process. I think we usually do that, do we not?
They've all been vetted because they've been on other committees, but...
But as this, you're asking us to approve this, but I have not seen the resumes, and I would like to do that. I don't want to hold anything up. However, I do want to follow an appropriate process for the two who are new.
Okay, they don't usually submit resumes.
Usually what we've done in the past is make a phone call, talk to each candidate or each person on the board. You have a five-minute conversation or a 10-minute, however long, and then you come back to first electwoman or myself and will say, you know, we're good.
I'm happy to do that. I just haven't had the opportunity. I'd love to have the opportunity.
That's what we've done in the past, so I'm good with all three of them because I know all three of them. Nancy, we talked to her on sustainability, I believe.
Yes.
So it's up to, I'll give her a call tomorrow.
Great, I just need the phone numbers. Happy to do it.
Well, can we make a motion to move them forward? Because they have to be voted on at the town meeting. I'd like to get them on for December 11th. Shall we hold up their reappointments?
It's up to Catherine. I'm good with moving forward.
It really brings this group down to the low amount, and they do weekly backpack program, they do a lot for the town.
I understand. I just want to establish a process of sharing information and doing everything appropriately. So my preference is to do the calls and interview them tomorrow, and I'll then give feedback as soon as I've done that.
Okay.
So are you going to try and schedule a special meeting in regards to that? Or, I'm not sure if it's appropriate, but you guys could make a motion and it could be...
Contingent on.
And vote on it.
Contingent on.
It could be contingent or it could just be a two-one, whatever you prefer. Whatever you'd like to do.
Right.
You go, Deb Catherine.
I move that we move forward with these three contingent on my having conversations with the two new people, Nancy O'Neil McGee and Joyce Barardis, pending receiving their phone numbers, and I'll do the calls tomorrow.
William, Joyce.
That is the motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
Okay, but you'll have to find the phone numbers. I do not have them. So you can do a little due diligence to contact these people, correct?
I will expect the assistant to the selectmen's office to provide me with the phone numbers, and I'm delighted to do the phone calls as early tomorrow as possible.
Okay, so that's the motion on the table. Can I have a second?
I second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed, me.
You oppose?
I oppose. But we move forward, so that's what we're going to do. Okay, number five, change of personnel. Just wanted to bring to everyone's attention Parks and Recreation Director has resigned. We have appointed an interim director. The hours are anticipated not to go over the line item for that salary position, so I don't think it should be an issue. We are advertising for that position. The Board of Park and Rec Commission has met. They've come up with the job description. They have a search committee, I mean, an interview committee all lined up. So when those positions, when resumes start coming in, we're all set with that.
And may I ask how will that work regarding salaries? The salary being offered to that role? Does that come before this group for review, or does that go before the board of finance?
We haven't decided on the salary yet.
I'm asking about the process. Please, what will be the process?
The process is we will meet with the Board of Finance and see what we can offer the new person. And then it'll, when the resumes come in, we'll have to advertise it with the salary, so.
Okay, thank you.
Also, our inland wetlands enforcement officer has resigned, so I'd like to thank Mark Ryer for all his years of service to the town. We have reached out to Chester to see if their officer would cover for us if need be. And also John Kozuski, who is our zoning enforcement officer, has also said he could help if need be. We just have to work out the financials. But again, I don't think that, at this point, I'm not suggesting we're going to go over that line item, so we don't have to really address that right now.
Are we planning on searching for a full-time replacement?
We are searching for a replacement. They are only part-time. Okay, number six, discuss the move to town meeting on unit-based pricing ordinance. So the last Board of Selectmen meeting, November 14th, that Board of Selectmen had moved to put the unit-based pricing program to a town vote on December 11th. That was approved, moved forward, but was not, what was not approved was the actual language of the ordinance that will get voted on. So I would like to read this, so it's on the record. This has been approved by the town attorney, and this will be, like I said, approved at the December 11th meeting. "In ordinance establishing unit-based pricing for residential users of the transfer station, the town of Deep River hereby adopts a unit-based pricing program, otherwise known as Pay As You Throw, effective on Earth Day, April 22nd, 2024, which shall require that all residential households, which is also residential generators, who deliver otherwise acceptable household waste to the transfer station directly rather than through the use of a commercial hauler, shall use specially designed and labeled plastic garbage bags. Household waste not contained in such specially labeled bags will not be accepted for disposal at the transfer station. The purpose of the Pay As You Throw program is to use economic incentives to reduce the amount of avoidable waste being generated by town residents. The specially labeled plastic bags will be available for purchase only by residents from the town. Bags shall be available in three sizes: 33 gallon at a price of $2 per bag; 13 gallons at a price of $135 a bag; and 8 gallons at a cost of $0.95 per bag. The funds generated from the sale of the garbage bags will be deposited into the town's general fund to offset the costs of the Pay As You Throw program and the capital and operational costs of the transfer station. Any person who violates the terms of this ordinance shall be treated as a residential violator under Section 10 of the Solid Waste Ordinance of the Town of Deep River. Such violation may result in fines or termination of a resident's use of the transfer station. Prior to the effective date of the ordinance, the Town of Deep River shall adopt a subsidy program to assist those with low incomes with the cost of purchasing bags, low income to be verified through qualification for other town benefits or for low-income residents." So that is the ordinance that we would like, again, to be voted on December 11th, so it's just the formality of what was already voted on the November 14th Board of Selectmen meeting. So I'd like to move that we, or make a motion to move this to the town vote on December 11th.
My only, my only question concern is the sale of the bags. Are they going to be checking IDs when they buy them? When they sell their bags, I mean, what happens if someone from Chester or someone from Essex comes in and buys a bag? Are the people at the store going to say, "Can you show us that you live in Deep River?" That's my own concern.
Right. Well, I think the ordinance, the way that the attorney had described it, we want it general enough that we can cover everything. Like we had, we actually had it where they were buying bags at Adams and Deep River Hardware, and she suggested we pull that. That was too specific, pull it out, keep it, you know. So I think that kind of, we'd obviously hope that the staff at the transfer station are on board. They're trained, they're looking for, and perhaps we still do the permits for the windows, and therefore you have to show up with a car that has the thing, plus you have the bag.
No, I'm all good. I just want, that's one of my, when I thought the landfill this past weekend, I was asked those questions by some residents, so I'm just bringing it back.
Okay. And the actual verbiage that would be in the documented ordinance is just this paragraph?
It's the whole thing.
On top of the normal ordinance that we already have?
Well, it would be up to the town clerk to establish where it goes in our town ordinance, but this is the ordinance page. Do I have a motion to accept the ordinance?
I'll make a motion to accept the ordinance.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay, number seven, discussion of the Possible Act on Additional Employee Hours in the Finance Department. So as you are probably all aware, we had a change of personnel in the Finance Department, and it caused some things to get a little, you know, not, kind of just trying to get last year's fiscal year closed out, the new stuff moving forward. So our new finance director has asked that the assistant finance director get approved for an additional three hours a week just through the end of the calendar year. And in doing that, that line item will not go over either, so that can, in the assistant finance director's line item, it'll be fine. So I'm recommending that we ask the Board of Finance to approve the additional three hours for the rest of the calendar year. And I would also suggest, as you probably are already planning to, that we sit through the Board of Finance because there's other issues or other things they want to bring up, not issues, but other things for the Finance Department. And our finance director will be at the Board of Finance meeting. So we didn't want to have to have her present twice, so we're just encouraging us all to stay in front of the Board of Finance meeting. But so I would like just a motion to recommend to the Board of Finance that we approve these additional three hours a week.
I make a motion that we approve the additional three hours a week through the end of this calendar year with the understanding that this addition will not go over the line item currently in the budget.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so all's we have left is adjournment.
Well, we usually talk, anyone have anything else they want to bring up?
Well, okay, it's not on the agenda though.
So will it be on the next agenda? You mean frequently it's on the agenda for the Board of Selectmen meetings?
I thought this was standard agenda. Do we usually have that as an agenda item?
We don't usually, for the Board of Selectmen agenda, I've never had another business placed on it. I know we do have it for Board of Finance. Typically, at some of the Board of Selectmen meetings, Angus would bring up things that have happened in the past, if there was paving done or anything like that. But as far as on bringing up, I'm sorry, any issues or concerns, that's through Audience of Citizens and through the agenda.
Yeah.
All right, so also suggestions for the next agenda.
You just give an overview of what, you know, during paves season, we're talking about paving roads.
Sure. I didn't really have much to report since it was holiday.
Sure.
Okay, so can I have a motion to adjourn, 6:59?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Here we, here we let us call to order the November 2023 Deep River Board of Finance meeting. And let us, well, arguably, welcome back, but they are chosen by the citizens to be returning, so thank you for returning, and thank you for citizens. They made wise moves, and I would like to recognize Cynthia Tourist, who I have been told won't answer to Cindy.
Yes, sir, yes.
People do get protective of their name, so. And you are serving to 25. It's a rather intimidating timeframe, which they call a meeting to a doctor, so. With that welcome and call to order, first item on our agenda is the approval of the October 24th minutes. Does anyone wish to discuss, make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I just have something to discuss after.
Okay, cool. There are a couple things on that meeting which I remind you, we will be discussing tonight. One of which is, what is the phrase? I apologize, I would call him dog catcher, but that is not the proper terminology in today's world. Animal control officer, we will be returning to that. Good, all those in favor?
No, no, Bud, I need a second.
Excuse me?
I need a second, I didn't hear it. Who seconded the motion?
Oh.
Mike.
Mike, I'm sorry.
Uh-huh, that is correct. Technical physical this one. All right, all those in favor of accepting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks, all right. The next item is nomination of officers.
Wait, hey Bud, I'm sorry, I think...
I just had something under the discussion.
Oh, good, good, yes.
I just want to make sure going forward that when we take a vote on something, all the votes are recorded accurately and tabulated accurately. Last meeting, before we went to executive session, I was asking a question and then the vote went forward. I've listed as an abstain, which I'm fine with, but I would have voted no because I wasn't, I didn't think it fit the criteria to go in. So I just want to make sure from now on, when we have a vote, it's slowed down, everyone's accurately counted and recorded.
Excellent, good. Should the minutes reflect?
Correction.
That you did not abstain, that you actually voted against? Should these minutes reflect the correction?
Yes.
Okay. It is good. All right, and we have a tradition, actually, and we're required to have a tradition. Every November, when we elect new members, the citizens elect, we have nominations for the officers for the following fiscal year. So the floor is open for nominations. I'll put my name in. I am willing to serve if, for as chairman, unless anyone, I am humbled. I'm honored to serve, but I'm also willing to share that humble and service if anyone else would like to get the position. So in addition to that, we need a vice chair in case I am not here. Names?
For both or just one?
For both. Let's do it separately. Unless there is some controversy, we do them both or together.
Separate.
Separate, all right. Nominate a chair.
Nominate Bud for chair.
All right, first and second. We'll take a vote. All those in favor from Bud serving, please say aye. Thank you very much. Oh, I don't vote, thank you very much. I nominate Carmella to serve as vice chair. Carmella and I are the ranking members of the Board of Finance with you first people here, so I put Carmella's name forward. So there is a first, and I, so all those?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
It is an honor, it is an honor, but it is an honor. A little bit, I'm very, I'm honored, I am humbled, I truly am. It is a grand job to have, and I say no more. All right, Audience of Citizens, seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on.
Tommy, it is time for you to welcome chair. Everyone has a hard copy of the town deposits. I know Anne Marie actually sent them by email too. Thank you for doing that. Cindy, welcome.
Thank you, sir.
And I'd like to, you know, before we start, I'd just like to say something about the new employees that we have in town and town office, and I think they're wonderful, they're great to work with, and certainly Anne Marie, thank you very much, it's great working with you. And also kudos to our long-serving. Yeah. And Vicki Galamatakas, who is accounting assistant, she's super two, and Tina, seven, is the administrative assistant. So we have a good team here in town hall, so again, it's been a pleasure to work with them. For the last three weeks since the election, I've been trying to change our signatures, get the signature cards from all the banks changed. We have four banks, we have 19 accounts. We have 10 accounts with Liberty, four with Citizens, three with Essex Savings Bank, and two with Guilford. But it's a very tedious process, but I think after tonight, I think we're done. I think I'm ready to roll with Alex. Just going over the town deposit report. If you go to the general, general fund accounts, a couple of things. You'll see the general fund with Citizens Bank were over $1,231. We'd like to keep that around $350,000 to $400,000. The reason it's so high is because we have checks outstanding that, you know, haven't cleared, but once they clear, we'll be down to that amount. Couple of things too with the Liberty Bank, our capital improvements borrow account. We, as far as interest for the last month, we had $2,508.19 in that account, and that account is only paying 3% because it's monies that were borrowed from dying bank. They're actually in an account where the, they're from the loan proceeds, and it's a holding account until those disbursements are made, so we're not allowed to exceed 3% on that account. The other accounts are at 5%. If you look at Guilford Savings Bank, we just opened that account up last month, and for the month, we received $5,090.95 in interest, so that's doing well there. And from the general fund accounts, from last month to this month, we're down by about $900,000, almost $901,000. Of course, a lot of that is accounts payables. Going on to our, if you look at the WPCA Business Money Market Account, we had actually taken, that was, we had a checking account with Citizens. We transferred, actually, the Board of Directors of WPCA approved us getting a interest-bearing account and taking some money out of the checking. We took $300,000 out of the checking account and put it into a money market account, and for that one month, we've gotten $763.64 in interest. We're looking at too on the memorial fund, the community fund, possibly doing the same thing. I know Jackie's the new treasurer, and she's going to talk to Carol and see if we might be able to do something along those lines too, taking some of that money and putting it into a money market account so we can get some interest there. But she's away, she'll be back next week, so we'll cut a hole in that. The ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act, originally we had $1,314,908 that the town received. Right now, if you look at the balance, we're down to $691,562.57. The monies have been dispersed to a lot of organizations and whatever. I think still we have, what, about $300,000 that haven't been, hasn't been committed yet?
Yeah, I mean, you can confirm with Anne Marie, but I...
But if we look at from last month to this month, so last month we had $962,368 in that account, and now we're down to $691,562. So in the last month, we've dispersed $270,806. We made eight disbursements in October, and we made one disbursement of $133,500 in November, and that was to the Deep River Ambulance Association. So again, we're, that will be, those monies will be spent eventually. They have to be spent within two years.
Tommy, can I ask you a question for just a minute? Did the Historical Society start their move yet with the...
I think that's, I think it's been completed.
I think it has been.
Yes, it's completed, yeah. I did, we did three wire transfers in the last month between October 23rd and November 27th. The one, the first one was to Citizens Bank General Fund to the Bessemer Trust Company in New York, New York. I actually talked to Kate Kreider today. That was a reimbursement of a double payment, and it was on eight vehicles for a particular person, so that was $17,662.31 that went back to that individual. Second transfer was Liberty Bank Money Market Account to our Citizens Bank General Fund of $1 million, and that was done on November 13th. That's money just pretty much that we need for accounts payable. And the third one was on November 16th. That was for Citizens Bank General Fund to Essex Savings Bank to credit Gould Larson Bennett McDonald Gilliam Touquet Clients Fund, and that's a credit to their real estate account of $70,260.43. What that was, that was town purchased property on Ratling Valley Road, 136 Ratling Valley Road. That was from the estate of Mary K. Harold. The purchase price was $80,000. $10,000 was paid by the seller, and so the town paid $70,260.43, the remainder, of which $260.43 was from taxes, for taxes. So originally, there was $158,000 was deposited into our general fund for open space. I just wanted to clarify that a little bit. I'm not really sure how we receive that money. Do you, are you familiar with that?
How we received it?
Yeah.
How, say how, you mean for a check? Do you mean for a check, wire, or what was the?
Well, $158,000, that was for what, what purpose? I know it's for open space, but I'm not sure what.
And I don't have the name. There was a developer who developed land. And I think the zoning requirements require him to make a contribution of a certain dollar amount or dedicate space on his development.
Right. So, it's like a payment in lieu of. It's called like a payment in lieu of.
Okay.
Payment in lieu of, very good.
Okay. And so, we still have $88,000 remaining that's in the general fund.
Is that the general fund?
Filtered through the general fund. So, yeah, it's the same question.
Right, does it?
Well, that's generally where we place our deposits when we receive them.
Oh, really? But we set up a separate fund?
We're going, in the accounting software, we will be setting up a separate fund.
Oh, in accounting sense, we set up a fund, but you have not created a separate fund with your own bank account.
Okay. So, those are the three wire transfers that we took care of. Our ECS monies, our education equalization grant monies, this year, we're, for the fiscal year, we're receiving $1,669,646. There's three allocations that happen during the fiscal year. One is, we did receive on October 31st, $417,415. And that's a quarter of that amount. And we'll receive another quarter on January 31st, 2024. And then the last dispersment, we'll receive $834,823, which will be, which will be on April 30th for this fiscal year. Our total, if you look at the total balances at the bottom, we're about $357,000 behind where we were last year. But we're ahead of where we were last year. And I was just going, actually, Anne Marie and I were just going over some of the, we have five bond issues. And I'm going to try to get something together so I can give everyone kind of a list of all our bond issues. So, you can pretty much follow along where we are. We have a sewer construction bond through the USDA. That was for $3,375,000. That is a payment, that payment is due and actually, I think we did get that payment out.
Yes.
Yeah, we have to pay that by check. It's due on November 30th. That was for $16,914.76. Our next payment due in December is for the Kirtland River Street Sewer Project through the USDA. That's for $118,379. That includes principal, principal and interest. And that is a debit to our general fund. So, we don't have to actually worry about paying that by check. And then the three remaining debt service that we have is actually a Kirtland River Street Sewer Project expansion. That was for $605,000. It's down to $533,940. That's due on June 23rd. And then we have the capital improvements borrow, which was for $1,425,000. That's down to $1,235,000. And that, that's not due. That's actually paid twice a year, interest twice a year and principal once a year. And the next payment, interest payment is due on February 15th. And the last one is the one that we just closed on for capital purchases through Dime Bank. And that one is for $500,000. And the first payment's not due until April 15th. And that will be a principal payment, $33,333. And.
How do that went, Tommy?
Excuse me?
We, the reason we issued that fund is to purchase a new sweeper and a new, and a.
Yeah, the street sweeper for $130,000.
A wood chipper. And they're on their way, aren't they?
Wood chipper for $100,000.
Is the, is sweeper on the way or do we order it yet?
Sweeper's about 12 months away.
Do we have payment? We gotta progress payments, don't we?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know that one. You mean as far as payments on that? What, how we're paying that back?
It seems logical that they would ask for something.
No, the first pay, well, the first payment's not due until April 15th.
Well, you're talking about the note.
Yeah, I'm talking about the note, yeah.
I'm talking about how we're using the proceeds of that note.
We haven't seen any bills.
Yeah, we haven't gotten anything.
We have not ordered the sweeper or?
I believe it's been ordered. I believe it's been ordered, but they haven't requested any payment.
No request?
Yeah, there's nothing that has been done.
I guess it's fine.
No, the wood chipper has been ordered. It has been received and it has been paid for.
If we total all our indebtedness of the five bond issues, the town owes $5,339,286 for the five, again, for the five bond issues. But, so, that's it.
Have we paid the prior borrow, a portion of which was going to fund the new pumper?
That was, that was through the capital improvements borrow.
Okay. We made payments on that one?
That one.
Made payments to, on the, on the pumper yet?
That one, okay. It was $1,425 and it's down to $1,53,000. So, that, we did, we did pay, there was an amount that was paid out.
But again, you are answering on the debt outstanding. I am intrigued by the.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
I'm gonna phrase it that way.
I think.
Wait, you left the participate. Fire Department said they were going to participate in funding that. We have yet to receive anything from them. So, I'm curious, have we made any payments on the pumper yet? It seems to me if we have not, we should call upon them to make that first payment.
Why is that?
I can answer that.
It's been several months, right?
Why is, well, why haven't they paid the two, what is it, $125,000?
$125,000, that's a problem.
It's been several months, six months, seven months.
Several months.
But who's counting? I didn't mean to have that attitude when I said that. But, okay. And we show, all right. All good. Tommy, the, the whole can follow up on. You have been able to negotiate with Liberty the same rate as Guilford Savings gave us, correct? You should be, no, you're facing the gates now.
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah. And actually, it was actually, yeah, they, they actually, when I was talking to them in a group, I mean, he taking over $2 million out of, out of the bank and giving it to, or, you know, opening an account with Guilford Savings Bank. They had offered to match Guilford Savings Bank. So, that's where we're at, the five.
It was Guilford Savings that offered us the higher rate. It gave you the ability to ask for a higher rate at Liberty.
Yes.
I was just a period.
Sure.
To get money from Guilford, you have to, what, do a wire transfer to get it back?
Yes.
As opposed to Liberty, which is just between accounts.
Pretty much a holding account, right? You're just getting interest on that money.
It seems that we need to honor Guilford since they started the task in the right direction. But if the rate, this is not, this is a yield, right? This is annual yield.
That is a yield. It's actually.
Will it change?
The nominal, the nominal rate is 4.89%, the yields.
Will they change that or is that a commitment they made to you? As interest rates go up or down?
Commitment, the commitment is, well, they can go up or down and whatever. But, you know, I don't see that happening for a while. So.
They can change that rate up or down?
Yeah.
At their discretion. They have not made a commitment to you. Okay.
I did look at the revenue report, which for short-term investments. So, we had.
We're doing very well.
We have budgeted $50,000 for short-term investments. We're up to, this is five months into the fiscal year. We're up to $65,379. So, we're doing real well.
We're doing very well. Exactly. Okay. All good. Have you had any problems with cash flow issues? Fact that you have money of town and water push control at Guilford, did you have to move back and forth?
Not at all. No, not at all. No. Yeah, no, we're in very good shape. We still have over, the account that we normally use with, with Liberty, I mean, we're, but we're over, still have $4 million in that, $4 million in that account.
Hopefully, that's adequate. All right. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah. Mike asked who could follow up with, on that fire department thing. Is there a way we can pursue that so that the $125,000 goes into an account against the truck that's been ordered? Is there a reason why you're holding on to that money?
Wait, you're selecting to answer that question?
Well, you have the.
I have heard.
Chair of the Board of Fire.
I have been told stories, but they are stories that are not with substance to it.
You know, I, I thought.
Dave's the chairman of the fire commission. If Dave would like to.
That seems sort of unfair, sitting here. I will ask Dave to follow up.
Yeah, I will follow up. Do you actually have a first bill for the tanker?
I don't, we could check with Anne Marie. I don't ever remember receiving a bill for the tanker.
I know, from what I've heard.
Not that I know of.
Not that I know of.
From what I've heard from them, as soon as the bill comes in, they're gonna make the.
And that is what sort of I've heard in there are, it's a logical presentation. We'll hold the money. We'll invest the money since investments are good. We'll keep the return on the 125 until the first payment is due. There's some logic to that.
No, this is back in February 28th. We had the dispersment made on 8/18/2022 for $150,000 for progress payment made on the pumper contract for the fire truck.
But the, the pumper and tanker.
Yeah, but the engine is not financed by the Fire Department, Inc.
I got you.
They were only gonna make the donation toward the tanker.
Oh, okay. All right.
So, Dave, the tanker has been ordered?
Yes.
But we have not received a bill for it yet?
I haven't seen any.
That was my, that was my question. Have we made, been required to make any payment for that? The answer is no. And I think we're all leaning that when that first payment is made, we'll call upon 125.
Let me know at the fire commission meeting. I'll make sure that it goes to the Fire Department to get that, to get that money.
Right. Because this has been an issue for about six months. That's been brought up and the can's been kicked down the road for about six months. No one wants to answer it. No one could answer it. And it's just getting to the point now where you just need a clear answer on.
Yeah. And I, and I think the answer is when, when the invoices, when the invoice comes in, they'll make the payment. But there's, but there's been the wind voice, nothing to pay out.
I'm not, speaking for myself, I'm not sure that was the deal. But it is the deal now, or at least proposed deal. I thought the deal was they're giving the money to town and we were going to hold it in our fund, so.
At one point, they wanted to order the chassis themselves and pay for it. And I'm gonna say no. Yeah, that, right. Because the way the funds are, that kind of gets really messy. Because the amount that they were not, they were gonna contribute was not the exact amount for the chassis. So, it's, it's hard to do that. So, it was gonna go toward, toward the truck in general when the first, when the first payment, when the first invoice comes in.
I anticipate the issue will be over soon, so.
Yeah, I would think we should be getting an invoice.
We should be getting an invoice soon, yes.
Quick question for Tommy. And I think we addressed this a while ago, but just if you could remind me why we've got over $250,000 in, if I may tell you, that we're not collecting any interest on?
In fact, yeah, I have to get ahold of Angus too, because he was, we were in the process of looking at that. I had inquired with Liberty Bank, because when those accounts were opened up, they were opened as nonprofit accounts, which don't allow interest. So, and I'm not sure about, you know, these, these balances have pretty much stayed the same over quite a long period of time. So, I know he was in touch with Jane Marsh also, the current attorney. Let's see. But we're thinking, hoping that we could consolidate maybe two larger ones and just.
So, each line item is based on the building number and the income coming?
Yes. In fact, I pulled out two of the contracts, original contracts. I'll have to read through those and see if there's.
Because the interest rates are not gonna stay up forever.
No, I know.
So, we gain that revenue and send it somewhere else.
No, that's a good question, because that's something that we've been trying to look into.
So, it's reclassifying that particular account to a municipal account versus a nonprofit?
Well, it was, the way it was opened up, it was like a nonprofit. So, I'm not, I'm not sure, but as far as, you know, getting interest, we couldn't get interest at the time. But that was many years ago. So, I have to take a look at the contracts and see if there's, if there's anything we could, we can do. I don't, I don't see why we couldn't at this stage of the game. But I just want to make sure that there's no, there's no real underlying issues there.
Okay, thank you.
You've talked about consolidating all this as well, have you not?
Yeah, we actually did. At least the two large, the two large ones.
All right. Good.
So, all of the MAs mean there's no interest for those accounts?
Right, exactly. Yes.
It's a fair number of accounts.
Well, Citizens Bank, actually, with them, it's a little bit different, because they take an average, average balance of your accounts and, you know, defers expenses.
I mean, I think, you know, if we're gonna make changes, we should address the garden club line item too, because that really doesn't classify, I don't believe, town.
Over 149?
I know it. No, it's.
Yeah, that's a restoration.
It's 3,000. It's over 3,000.
What's the 149?
That's the town hall honor time. In fact, Carol, I think we were, we were talking about that the other day.
Oh, yeah. It's down to only 149.
Yeah, see what we could do to probably zero that out, probably close that account.
Yeah, could buy two light bulbs.
Yeah, there you go.
Stage light bulbs are so expensive.
Tom, are you thinking or are you, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. I'm sure you're thinking as well. Ms. Carol, this is your turn. The recommendation of selectmen and action zone recommendations.
Okay. Well, I did want to announce that the Fire Department did sell the antique truck that we all talked about for $5,000 on Friday. The day after Thanksgiving, Tim Lee met up with the gentleman purchasing it.
Is that told to another fire department?
It gets a collector somewhere down in Rhode Island. Yeah. But $5,000, so we have not received that check yet. The Fire Department has it. Tim will be bringing it in. And then at the Board of Selectmen.
They took the truck and they didn't pay for it or, that's what you're saying?
No, no, no. We gave them a check for $5,000.
Oh.
We just don't have it here. Tim Lee met him on Friday afternoon.
Tim confirmed to me that they were actually receiving a bank certified check.
Yes.
And he wasn't gonna hand over the title until he got the check.
Right.
Yeah. I, Tim Lee also confirmed that to me when I handed over the title and bill of sale, that it would be a certified bank check that he would receive.
So, and then at the Board of Selectmen meeting earlier tonight, we voted unanimously to bring to the Board of Selectmen our approval. We want to recommend to the Board of Finance, I should say, that to add additional three hours per week for the assistant to the finance department through the calendar year. And we, it's our understanding that it will not affect the line item, will not go over. So, it was our recommendation to you to approve three additional hours for Vicky up in the finance department.
We put your selectman recommendation into a story that Anne Marie will tell us?
Yes.
Okay. Should we do that first or?
Right. The selectmen were aware that there are.
What I've asked them to do is there has been, what did we agree? What we're saying, there has been some changes in our finance group over the last, throwing to August. And we have had to incur incremental costs, which will be, which most likely will put us over what we budgeted, okay? Anne Marie has spent time giving us an estimate of what those incremental costs are, will be. And with that in mind, Anne Marie will take over, unless you wish to continue. Okay.
Okay. So, I took a look at the finance director's salary line, which is where all of those incremental charges have been hidden. I'll find it on page one in the selectmen section. The current budget is for $105,000. We're currently sitting at about $65,000. So, it's about a little more than halfway. It's about 37% to go. Based on those incremental costs that Bud referred to. In summary, I expect that line to go over by about $35,000. Now, the main driver behind this is bringing on various accounting consultants who fulfilled a number of needs that were discovered in the finance department. Most notably, maintaining the accounts payable function and the payroll functions. In addition to working to get our books in order to close out the last fiscal year, which we are very close to being in a good place to do that. So, that totaled about $35,000.
So, the finance director, you're putting all the incremental cleanup cost in your line. So the finance director, you're putting all the incremental cleanup cost in your line item, finance director. To that line, the number that we budgeted was lower. We brought up from down below, if you're looking at your chart. The town authorized us to spend forty thousand dollars in salary adjustment. We have brought a substantial portion of that to cover the one oh five that we've committed to finance director. In that same line, we have.
Accounting consultants.
We have Mahoney Sable, which is helping us. And we have hired somebody who used to be the finance director at Essex to prepare, tidy up, what's the proper word? The financials, so that the auditors come in and can audit that. Is that the only, oh, there were costs already in there, since there was an incumbent in the position. We had to pay her a portion of salary and vacation, whatever compensation. So your thoughts is that line item, which is now budgeted for a hundred and five, will be a hundred and thirty-five, is about where you're going, right? You go over that line.
About one forty.
How much, a hundred and four?
One forty total.
Okay, one forty-four, okay?
One forty total. Thirty-five thousand.
All right, so we should anticipate that line going over. Yes, better.
Why would we not separate finance director line item from these other expenses that were incurred as a result of an administrative change? It just doesn't represent, I think, clearly to the townspeople where the expenses are. I don't know from a budgeting standpoint, but I don't think it's fair to reflect what says here, finance director. That is not an expense of the finance director. Those are a lot of.
So you're suggesting creating another line item in the budget, which would collect all of those numbers? So we would have three, finance director.
From an accounting perspective, that would be a more appropriate approach.
All right. How will you do the prior incumbent to that position?
She should still stay in that finance director line, as it was previously the account manager line, which is the job she was fulfilling.
Is that the title?
She was the accounting manager when she was here, yes.
So we would continue to expect finance director to, line to go over budget, you?
No.
No.
It would not, it would not reflect, it would be inaccurate description of account.
Well, if we were paying the current finance director one oh five.
It would be under.
And we paid the other finance person, why wouldn't it go over the one oh five?
Because she was not making one oh five.
No, she was not, but she was making.
She was making a decent amount, but there was also.
And her severance is in there, or we move the severance down below?
Her severance should stay there, but there was also a period of time where the position was vacant.
All right. All right, I have, that sounds like a grand idea. At least we could identify, we'll be able to tell the town to address the issues that are fighting tomorrow. Here are the non-budgeted expenses. You did not see the third. It's an interesting conversation we're having. The town did not give us a dollar amount of approval to spend those dollars. We have no choice, we're going to spend them. I'm suggesting we, what we have done in the past, and I have no reason why, other than the owners tell me every town does it. If you go over on certain line items for people, you just go over. We will not go back to the town, is what I'm saying, and ask for authority to spend those dollars. We'll just spend them. Follow?
With an explanation at the end of the year, when you do next year's budget. At the town meeting.
When we stand in front of the town, we will say, here is the cost that we incurred. Now, as we go through our discussions, there will be discussions we have tonight, where we will need to return to the town, ask for dollars, incremental dollars. But, just as I sit here right now, we have not, I have not contemplated doing that for that line item.
Are we required to? I don't know that.
Does the story change if we create a new account for the consultants?
Yes. Okay, so you will break out, Carol's recommendation. Oh, you did? Fine, you create a new line item. We are not limited in our line items in any way, are we?
No.
Okay, good, and a budget. All right, take us to the next line.
I have a quick question on that. Is the money that the selectmen suggested, we said it was not going over the line item to have those three extra hours, and we approved it. What line item is it not going over?
That is the accounts manager assistant line, just under the.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
So, board of finances, there's no action while there's a recommendation from the selectmen. There should be no, there's no necessary action on our part, since that line item will cover the incremental hours and the cost, is what we were being told. So there's no action on our part. Good, board of finances? Excellent. All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Carol, I think we've done it. Back to you. What do you want to go?
Those are the only two things I had so far. Excuse me, I'm all set.
Wouldn't you chat about recreation?
Did we go down the?
So we are, so.
We don't have to?
What's that?
Of nothing.
Oh, okay. So, yes, so we've appointed an interim park and rec director. They're going to be working ten to twenty hours a week and making, so we don't think at this point that that line will go over, because the person that's vacated the job was on salary and making more than ten to twenty hours a week. So I think we're set for now. We don't have to contemplate yet that we need more on that line item. We are advertising for the position. We just posted internally for two weeks, and beginning tomorrow, it'll go out. And we are hoping to offer at least the salary as it stands now for that position.
So you do not anticipate.
So I do not anticipate.
Need to offer more to attract yet, okay?
Yes, right. We won't know that probably until we start getting some feedback with resumes, applications, that sort of thing. But at this point, I think it's a fair salary that we could get the candidate for that.
Excellent, good, okay.
Can you tell us the name of the interim director?
Mary Morrissey.
Thank you. And where are we advertising it?
Right now, we're required to post any municipal job internally. We do that for two weeks. Once the two weeks is up, we decide where we're posting it. So most likely, I am going to post it to the CCM website. That gets a lot of, a lot of municipal employees to look at it. Thank you.
And we'll also put it on the Connecticut Park and Rec Association.
And we'll also place it on our website.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Carol, Julie, Sam, Emery, talk about the grant that we have received for accreditation, of the police accreditation. We had talked about the need for the board of finance to establish a separate fund in the grant fund.
We would need a separate account in order to attract these.
And do we, do we, the board of finance, need to do that? My understanding is yes. You can't create a fund without us saying yes, thank you.
I don't know that we need a true separate fund. We certainly would need a separate account under the grants fund.
All right, again, I was told, just told, that we need to create part of the, to get the grant. Hold on, we should talk about the grant. There's a great deal of celebration that should take place with the grant, okay? The grant is four, to fill in the number, a large number.
I prepared a grant, asking, requesting, a federal grant, requesting a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to go towards police accreditation. Shockingly, we received that grant, and.
I want to go over, it's like Tommy's taking credit for the interest rate, we wish to give you credit for a grant.
Thank you. I worked very closely with Steve Kraus, our resident state trooper, in regards to that, so kudos to him as well. And we, when we, when I prepared the grant, I prepared specific spreadsheets on what exactly that hundred and sixty thousand dollars would go towards. So it is to the penny of what we will be spending. I have shared the spreadsheets with, obviously, Steve Kraus. I believe I shared them with Emery. And now Steve and I have to go work together to try and manage the grant and, you know, get the, everything that we said we were going to in the police accreditation grant. Most of the stuff, most of the grant is going towards salary. It's going towards the person that we hired, the consultant, or not the consultant, but the.
We should put an asterisk there, and you'll start again. In this year's budget, we put fifteen thousand dollars for an accreditation study for upstairs. Is that the way we phrase it?
Yeah, well, it's an accreditation that we were mandated by the state to have.
And we budgeted for it.
Yeah, it was a non-funded.
But this grant will fund that, certainly that activity and more.
Well, everything prior to receiving the grant will not be covered. That's stated in the grant, but anything from the date we receive the grant will be covered under the grant. So like I said, a lot of it is going towards salary. There's a few parts to it. So we have one part that the consultant, and I don't know if I'm saying the term correctly, but I'm calling him a consultant, is preparing, he's actually preparing the accreditation. But we have a lot of review time that will go into our resident trooper, into his salary. And there's also training, and that will go into our full-time constable.
How much did we incur today? Not much, right? We budgeted fifteen, but we haven't spent much yet.
Six hundred and eight.
How much?
Six hundred and eight.
Six hundred and eighty?
No, six hundred and eight dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, I wasn't quite sure what we've spent thus far, but I do know that anything that we did prior to the grant wouldn't be covered.
Okay.
So does the grant go into our line item for the accreditation?
No, that's a good question. No, it won't go into this budget, because it will, it's a grant.
I believe it's a grant.
We'll get better at this, Emery. It is, we have a grant fund. For any time we get a grant, it goes into the grant fund. Now, I assume the town has to approve this grant?
The town has to approve the grant?
Does the town have to say, yes, we will accept this grant, and yes, we will spend this money?
I never heard it.
I will double check. I've never heard, once we get a grant, that they have to approve it, because what if they said no?
Well, if you get a grant, you have to get town approval, don't we?
Yeah, I, I would have to check, because I can't say yes or no. But I think Cindy seems to be well aware of the police accreditation, so I'd be.
Thank you.
No problem.
I'm an accreditation manager for my police department. Certified for the national accreditation and through POST. So there's two different certification programs that we can go through. I would be curious which one, we've signed up for one through Kalia, which is the national one. Costs money to the town. There's something that's very similar. It is the way that my department, I'm actually doing both processes right now through my department, is absolutely free, and that's through the POST, that's the police officer standards and training in the state. I know, I don't know what the policies look like for the police department in, you know, for our resident trooper. I understand the process, how we do have to be certified, but it is a statute, it's part of the police reform. It is a big lift, it is, but I'm doing it for free for my department. So I don't know if that opens up a whole other discussion to be had, but I would certainly love to be a part of maybe helping to take a look at how the funding is for that. I would love to help with that.
Yeah, I could, I would, yeah, obviously, I have to get approval from our first selectman, no matter what I do, but I would love to show you the grant.
Yeah, and please, by all means, anything that I would look at would be free. I'm not looking for anything.
Oh, no.
Right, I'm just looking for some, it is an area that I've spent quite a few years now on, and I'd love to help with that.
I want to follow Carol's question. It is not going to be in this general budget. The board of finance will not have authority over expenses, nor over the receipt of the revenue. So we're not going to do our town budget. We don't go into a separate fund, where I get curious how does Emery write checks unless somebody has approved it?
How is that different with ARPA money? ARPA is a grant, correct? But we're making decisions on how it was.
Interesting analogy. According to what we have been taught, ARPA has to go through the exact same process by which you spend any other town funds, which is why we are involved. Now, unless you tell me that is true for this, it's my assumption, once the town approves it, it goes into the fund, and Emery has the authority to spend it when the bill is committed.
ARPA behaves very differently from this kind of grant, because the ARPA money is just handed to us with a dollar amount attached, and then it's up to the town to figure out how to spend it. In order to get this money, Joyce had to tell the state to the penny, or the federal government to the penny, exactly what this would be spent on.
Okay.
So in theory, this money is already a restricted use.
So question, what is the money being spent on? What is accreditation?
I turn it back to, over to Joyce and Cindy for that.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the public act happened a few years ago in the state of Connecticut, in which we, all police departments across the state had to become accredited. That national standard, the Kalia standard, is, again, it's kind of the one that's been, it was voluntary for most agencies for a long time, but then it became, you know, a forced action for police departments. As such, the state of Connecticut responded with, through POST, the police officer standards and training, with their own similar standard. So it brings all of our policies up to date to include transparency, to include ethical actions, unbiased policing procedures, that we are held accountable to, we being the police departments, the police officers, and the administrators. And it's a review process that is never ending. So we're going through a tiered process. We're now in tier two. There's three tiers to it. And again, it's free with, depending on which way you go. I understand that some departments are hiring folks to do that. A lot of departments, most departments across the state of Connecticut, including the state police, have done that internally in the past. So they train their own officers to become accreditation managers, and then they do the accreditation process. So they are the sole accreditation manager for their agency, and then they bring, that's what I'm doing now, walk their department through that whole testing process.
So what originally happened, Carmela, is our resident state trooper was doing our police accreditation for us. And then another mandate came down from, I don't remember who, and I don't want to misspeak, that said that that is not the, not, that's not what he should be using his time for. So then we went out and hired someone to do our.
And that's what's put fifteen thousand dollars in the budget?
Is it a supplement?
Correct.
Other individuals?
This other individual.
Standards for our police department?
Correct, and any additional work that our resident state trooper has to do in reviewing it, and also any additional work that our full-time consul has to do in regards to, I believe it's a third tier, and I could be wrong, but all the training. If there is, there's something that I know. I don't know what exactly.
I would be curious what that would be related to, also training officer for my department, and I would be curious what it would look like. Just respectfully, I'd be curious.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I have, I know that we had budgeted some sort of, in there in case there was something that we needed. Yeah.
All right, so it is your position, we do not need, the grant, here's what we're going to use the grant for, it was granted. You do not believe we need any additional controls to spend that money. Now, by the way, you will reimburse, as most of these brands. So you will spend some identified dollars as laid out in the grant, and the town will have to fund it, and you will periodically ask for some reimbursement or something like that?
I can follow up with some folks who have more experience than I, and just ensure that I'm thinking about it the right way. But that is what my gut says. But that is what my gut says.
All right, this is the grand story, all right. All right, Ms. Carol, it's your turn to introduce. We're going to, you and your staff are going to think about hiring a new accounting system.
Oh. Yes, so just to make you all aware, the current accounting system that we have upstairs is a program called BMSI. The manual for BMSI that I have upstairs was written in nineteen ninety-six. There has not been an upgrade since then. There are significant limitations to this software that frankly, from a risk management perspective, are a little bit scary. Our auditors have spoken on this topic and have urged us to put significant effort into updating our system as soon as possible. To that end, I have been doing some research. We currently have an RFP out there. I know of at least two major players in the industry that are interested and will be submitting bids. To make you all aware, it is not a cheap endeavor. The majority of systems these days now operate as a SaaS system, services as software, which means paying an annual licensing fee. From my research, I would estimate we will be spending about twenty thousand dollars a year. That does not include the implementation fee or whenever we do make this change, which will be significantly more than that twenty thousand dollars. I don't have a good enough grasp yet, but it will be large. Definitely five figures, hopefully not six.
Are you guessing, you're guessing at the initial fee? What do you say?
The implementation fee, yes.
Do you buy the software? I didn't have, here, I got to pay a license for it.
We pay an annual license based on various factors. Different companies price in different ways, but one of the bigger ones is the number of users, which thankfully we have very few. And also the size of the town. So those two will be helpful for us. But on top of that annual fee, there is what they call the implementation fee. The process of upgrading an accounting software is incredibly complicated and takes a minimum of six months. You have to run the two systems in parallel to ensure that your data, you know, has some integrity at the end. And so, and there's a lot of pre-work involved where these companies will look at our charted accounts and make recommendations based on, you know, the way their software functions to just ensure a smooth transition of data. So quite a bit of time and effort.
You're summarizing, then you're going to make over again. You wish to spend a lot of money very soon in the area of seventy-five, eighty, ninety thousand dollars to get a new accounting system?
Yes.
And you wish to start this work January, February, so that in July, the new system goes.
That would be ideal. I do want to be realistic.
Okay, ideal, it's good at this point.
Yes.
Which means this board will need to approve, not today.
No.
Next month. A dollar amount, allowing you to launch a new contract.
Yes.
So if we approve whatever your chosen number, a system and number is, and our December meeting, it would go to a public meeting in January and you would be able to start your work in February, which would get you onboard by July, right? So December, we're going to have to make a decision, not in the budget. Picking up a conversation we had a few moments ago, it is not currently budgeted. We will need to go into the town and ask for additional funding in January. Questions, thoughts?
Is there grant money anywhere in the state for such upgrades?
Not that I've found, but I have started looking.
And ARPA would be a option, I guess.
ARPA could be used. I bet as I understand it, there are currently many other proposals for ARPA money.
Because we have about, what, three hundred thousand left?
We do, and we currently have approximately six hundred thousand dollars in requests. Still outstanding.
Outstanding.
Yes.
But they haven't been approved though, right? Or they have?
They have not been approved.
We could use, we could use ARPA funds to fund this. And where is the select, I don't know if the selectmen have made any decisions on the remaining ARPA funds, but this would be, this would be worth a purchase, but anyhow, to be determined. But that should be determined soon if we're going to use it for this one, so.
Some of the nit money.
How many people would be using the system? Just you?
Myself and the assistant account manager.
And obviously there's going to be some training period for you to familiarize yourself with how it operates and what it does. And how does it help in our budgeting and you, you know, dispersing funds, receiving monies, that sort of thing? What, does this simplify your job? Does it make it easier to do our audit? What's the benefit of having this?
All of the above.
Like trying to use ALO on the internet.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it would be like going from dial-up to fiber optic internet.
Okay.
But yes, in all of those areas, we would see significant improvement in time savings. But I can pull out some specific examples if you'd like of changes.
I'm just totally unfamiliar with what you do, because I work with money, so.
Yes, no, so for example, in this report, we have a line that Bud and I kind of agonize over because it's related to some spend in the capital space, that those dollars were approved for that spend. But because that budget was booked to the system in the prior year, but the expenses hit this year, it looks like we spent against a zero budget line item, which really is not correct at the end of the day. And that is a limitation of this particular software, that I cannot run a report and tell it this is a budgeted number that will carry over from year to year, which comes as a basic standard option in today's softwares. So that's just one example.
It's twenty-seven years old, the software.
It is almost as old as I am.
It's going to make our jobs.
For those of us who wish to go back and do a time machine, our auditor sat here and put us on notice that our accounting system was getting very old and we needed to do something. And the good news is, they were suggesting the cost is like a hundred and fifty, so with Anne Marie's help, we're getting a discount. All right, questions or something to look forward to?
So between researching a grant and possibly using ARPA money, it might be taken care of.
Hey, just a point, you may have gotten pretty close. In theory, something of this magnitude, we should ask for bids. And as opposed to bidding, you went and asked how many vendors, and that number is small, right?
The number is small. I am asking for bids, though.
Oh, you're asking for bids?
Yes, the RFP is out on the town website and somewhere else.
It's going up on CT Source.
Yes, thank you.
What are vendors saying? They used to bid or are they saying, no, we have to sit and talk with you in custom design? Are they working with us on a bid?
So there's a question period built into the bid for the RFP for things like this. But I have already had a demo from one company.
All right, so we'll Just for discussion, I mean, we talked about using the ARPA money. And Joyce said we have almost six hundred thousand dollars of requests out there.
You've got more requests than you have money, right?
Correct. And we're just adding to the list. Do we look at the general fund and take it out of the general fund? As you know, affecting the ARPA money, because originally we laid out three modules that we're going to donate our money to, right? And where are we on that right now? That'd be my only concern there, that we say we're going to help out the community, and yes, the town's going to help out the community indirectly, but indirectly, we should probably think about the general fund. I'm just bringing up for discussion.
I think it'd be important for the selectmen to look at the outstanding requests and come to some point of decision on those. Maybe sooner and later, if there's a January deadline on this. This is a very serious expenditure and a needed one. Some others have been, I don't want to say frivolous, more, but lighter in what they've been given. To my recollection, the last amount of monies was to be for small businesses. There had been discussion of hiring a consultant for twenty thousand dollars to, I don't know where that all ended up. But it would be timely for us to look at that. I don't know if you want to do that in another meeting or a special meeting or what that would be to move it forward.
I agree to see what, see what's out there for requests. And then not that we keep going to the bank and the general fund, because we've built up a nice reserve, but we built up a reserve for situations like this.
Yes, correct.
We sit here every year, year in, year out, listen to the auditors, and we've done nothing. We've kicked the can down the road for, I've been around for seven years now, so. Maybe it's time, you know, twenty-seven years on a software, that's a long time, and I'm not a computer guru.
Do your general fund, are you able to provide a estimate of our surplus for the year ending June thirty? Are you comfortable doing that yet? You don't have to, okay?
I know. I have to have a discussion with the auditors on an outstanding point before I'm comfortable sharing numbers.
Hopefully you can get that number to us. If we're going to commit seventy-five, ninety, it would be nice to know the amount of surplus. I do, I'm comfortable there's a surplus. I give it an estimate of six hundred. I want to know how close I got. And that would give us comfort if we're committing general funds. And by the way, my question is incremental, ending June thirty, revenues, expenses, which we can add to, so. Any additional questions for Anne Marie? All good. To Tommy's point, Anne Marie is with us, okay? Let us turn to monthly budget report, although we did cover most of the interesting stuff already. Cindy, I assume that you are not made on the mailing schedule?
I'm our secretary. Yes, I will see you there, thank you.
Good, she's on the mailing schedule, okay, cool. I have it right here. You and I will look at it together. As soon as I get out wanting, you go into an order.
You can, I
All right, here you go.
It's okay.
Are you sure?
Large print.
Okay.
No, here you go.
Thank you.
All right, let us start with the selectmen. Angus, who has chosen not to run again, has generated vacation and sick pay that we will have to pay him out for. So we'll worry about that in future, future times. We talked about basically everything in the selectman budget unless anyone has any questions on it. Let us say the following, hopefully useful. This is the fifth month in the fiscal year, suggesting we've spent, if we were to spend things on a straight-line basis, which we don't, but as a rule of thumb, this would indicate, when we look at that last column, anything, anywhere we have percent left, about sixty would suggest we're doing okay and we should focus on other items. But we'll stop anywhere anyone wants to stop, okay?
But on the line items that have not spent anything, like the economic development commission still has a hundred percent of their budget left and the ethics commission, is there any anticipation they're going to use that up by the middle of the year, the end of the year? Do they wait before they use their budget?
Not their work, no.
Remember the ethics commission, that line item was put in for possible attorneys fees. So we won't know if they're coming up because we don't know.
Unless they use an attorney.
Right. Not unless a complaint is filed that they need legal services for.
If, we'll just stop for a moment, look at elections. There seems to be a substantial amount of dollars left in the elections. In May, we have a primary?
April second.
Will we have a primary in May? We don't know, do we?
April second, April second's the primary.
Who runs in the primary?
It's like that special primary for, but they give, they date for
Well, certainly there will be a Republican primary soon, yes, okay. And we have a racial board. So I think there's enough dollars, but I just thought I'd stop there and we have the conversation. All right, and again, any place you want to stop, we can. Town building repairs, we budgeted fifty, and Anne Marie has parked eight thousand dollars there, correct, okay? That will be, that is for those, it's only Carmela and I. We did, we budgeted several years ago to do work at the garage, and it took several years to do it. And somehow you're going to post it prior years? You'll take it out of the air?
Well, the expenditures happen in the current year, so they have to hit there. But that, and this is the example that I was giving about how we cannot carry over budgeted dollars.
So these are thoughts we're going to spend, did we spend fifty-eight? Town hall repairs, that would be a horrible number to go over. I mean, all the work we have to do on other town buildings.
But to your point, you're saying that some of that garage money was from prior years?
Oh, yeah, that is exactly right.
Really? But we can't reflect that in that fifty thousand dollars because of the accounting software limitation.
Say that again, I'm not sure. I see that was from several years ago.
The money, budgeted approved money was from several years ago.
That's correct.
But that gets wiped away in the new fiscal year in this report, that budgeted
That number did not go over. I thought we put a reserve on that, so it could be spent future years. Thought we'd put an encumbrance on it.
But it wouldn't show, unless you're saying that you decided that you were going to truly budget forty thousand dollars for town repairs this year and then you added ten from the prior years that you didn't use the budgeted funds.
So the town has no authority, we've already gone over our budget on building repairs. So we have no authority. We all respect that line, because we have any work on buildings, we have no authority. Unless we go to the town and ask for additional money there.
The only thing I'm not sure of when I look at that line is I would imagine that some of these building repairs could qualify as capital expenses, in which case
Well, I don't have any capital either.
Well.
I assume most of it is capital, but
Then why is it hitting here?
So we have no money spent on buildings, unless we ask the town for more money.
I mean, I can provide you with a breakdown of what exactly has hit against that line versus what you anticipated.
I mean, we're going to have to do something. I mean, there's just tons of buildings we have to address. I was under the impression that was a parking spot and that it would be eventually moved to someplace else, recognizing at the age. All right, we'll have to work on that. Didn't we do work at the firehouse roof, on the firehouse roof as well? Oh, we didn't? I thought there was a hole in the roof.
Still leaking. So the tar is up there, but that's it, it's leaking badly.
That has to be addressed, okay, all right. It's not one thing, it's another, as my grandmother would say. Cool. All right, anybody speak, so town hall repairs, that one's caught my attention. Let's see, I didn't think of too many other ones that I found particularly interesting.
So the beautification committee in the auditorium are carrying a thousand dollars in each of those? What is the beautification committee? Is that the flowers and plants and whatever?
Yes.
And the auditorium, why are we carrying a thousand dollars there?
In case there's maintenance up in the auditorium?
The upper blind is not working. I've noticed last week, needing repair. I don't even know where to send that to somebody. There's a little cost that needs, that we can spend that though.
And it should be addressed.
So that's essentially for repairs in the auditorium?
If you remember, well, if you remember, we collect revenue for people who use the auditorium. And often we incur costs because we have to pay somebody who set things up and chairs and that type of thing. And it goes through this expense line of, oh. Can we pay the town crew to set up, or who do we pay sometimes to set up chairs and stuff?
Usually me and the town.
We have incremental, we have incremental costs, don't we?
I've done it.
We've never got paid.
Angus went up there. No, we don't get paid for it, we just do it.
Do we have incremental costs when we do rent it out or something?
Cleaning.
We have, we have to pay incremental cleaning.
There's a charge for rentals.
There is a charge for, yeah.
People pay.
Building inspector's salary is running lower than I would expect it. That's because he's working more than expected and you will see on the revenue side, we should get incremental revenue. When I complain about his cost, he always says he's making money for the town and I think he's correct. Enforcement agent salary, Carol, back to you. Enforcement agent salary, you want to make an announcement on that one?
Oh, Mark Ryer has resigned. And so at this point, I don't know if what he was making is still kind of the at this point, I don't know if what he was making is still kind of the current in the market, but we've reached out to Chester. I've reached out to Chester to see if their enforcement officer will cover, and also I talked to John Kraszewski, is that how you spell it? Thank you, and he said he could also cover, although he doesn't want to go to any more meetings in the evening.
So I anticipate you will be bringing us some recommendation on that, hopefully they'll fit into this, but, okay.
Yes, hopefully they'll fit into that, I-
Alright, sounds good. Insurance and bonds, we seem to be doing amazingly well on that, good. Funded police services, I think we go through this all the time. We arbitrarily budget thirty thousand dollars for those of our officers who are alongside, give me the proper terminology, who are, work with contractors. We then bill those contractors, we pay the, our town people to be out there, we bill the contractors, so you will see a corresponding number in revenues. We have overspent that by twenty-two, but I think we've collected forty-five. We're doing fairly well on that, there's a differential that we've, and we need to look at that periodically. Fire, you will note, fire is doing generally well, with the exception they are overspending in their training. Seems, we certainly want them trained, but we should talk about that, alright.
That's actually a really good problem we have. They're overspending the training because they have a lot of new, younger volunteers that have joined the department. Most volunteer fire departments are lacking in new people joining, and we have a situation here in town where we have a lot of new juniors that are joining. So they have to get trained, but it's really a good thing.
We should probably increase the line item, but, yes, training is good. If you remember from prior conversations when I'm in town, the highway department, if you remember, we have two foremen, one foreman has at least put us on notice that his intention is to retire in January. He has not pulled that back, correct? He's pulled it back in prior years, so I assume it's going to happen.
He hasn't pulled it back yet.
There should be adequate number in that line item to, to hire another employee, and we will, he has been in anticipation retired, he has been taking his, been using his accrued vacation and sick pay, so we should be, we should be fine on that line item. Pre-removal is getting awfully close. His budgeted fifty, have spent thirty, it's amazing, now, oh, we have a contract, that's why it's so round. I'm just triggered, any number comes in on the round part there. That's one that could get tight on us, shouldn't it? Nursing services are doing fine, if you remember, for many of you. Carmella, were you here back in the battle? The town that he first, back in the depression days, had its own nursing services, and extremely noble-
I, in the depression days, sir, I beg your pardon.
There was a massive, massive battle, help me out, ten years ago, fifteen years ago? A massive battle in this town on nursing services. We, we ended our nursing services and hired a social service person, and asked lower-value nursing services to provide services to us. They said they would do it for forty thousand dollars. We cut their budget back to twenty, and we still haven't spent them, so, I don't know what the story is there. Jackie has been working with them, so that is a story to be told in the future, alright? Well, let's go to, I believe, if you remember, we budgeted for the elementary school, capital the elementary school, forty thousand. It is my understanding that most of that has been committed already. For those of you who are new, every year, every five years, the town, every town is required to revalue its property, and it cost us about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Instead of charging the town, that year, we had been putting money aside. That money is currently sitting in general fund. You don't want to put it in anyplace else, general fund you're happy with, okay? So we will take it out soon. Loes of, here's one that I am uncomfortable with. The state of Connecticut puts money aside for every town, every year. You have to apply for it, if you apply for it, the state will give you the money they set aside. We are spending that money before we have applied for it. I'm a tad uncomfortable, but we've done that for the last couple of years, but that is why you will see loads of expenditures, but when we get to revenues, you will, you will see we anticipated, but we have not received it, so. Now talking again about fire truck equipment of eight thousand dollars that is on budget, you'll film, explain it to me several times. I shall not try to explain, do it again.
So, from what I can tell, these expenses are related to the approved capital expenditure in the prior year. However, we did not receive them until the current year.
Shouldn't that be in the capital reoccurring town? Not here? Oh, well, we haven't figured out the accounting on that yet.
We have not.
Okay, alright. Thanks to look forward to it.
Yes.
And talk about library kitchen again. We budgeted two-five, and we spent thirteen-six?
It's, it's not library kitchens, incorrectly booked, those are expenditure, those are grants expenditures.
There was something, you're voting they're correct or incorrect?
Incorrect, they will be moved before the next meeting.
Alright. Although we've called out a couple of things that we have questions on. I suggest we have a twenty thousand expenditure, twenty thousand nine, let's call it twenty, nineteen-nine is our budget for the year, alright? Expense budget, let's call it twenty, just to make our conversation simple. We have, we have spent seven-two, we have twelve-seven remaining. We have about sixty-three, sixty-four percent of our expenditures yet to be spent. That seems pretty good, doesn't it? How about that for a grand summary? I think we're doing fine on our expenditures. If you continue down, you will see your revenue, alright? We collect property taxes twice a year, but in July, we collect first part of the property taxes, we also collect personal property and auto. So I think we're right on budget for a property tax, occurring, about forty-two percent. Property taxes in a rear, we budgeted a hundred and twenty, you can see we're making great progress there. Loans and fees, we're doing an excellent job collecting those fees. I was just chatting with our tax collector before I came to the meeting. There are motor vehicles that did not catch the October grand list. People bought new motor vehicles after the grand list. So there is a supplemental bill that is just being sent out within the hour, I made that up, soon, alright? And my understanding, they're sending out supplemental of motor vehicles, about a hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, so we should be, we should be doing fairly well on that number, if not higher. Building permits, we budgeted, what did we budget, forty? We're, oh no, sixty, and we've collected fifty so far. So people are putting additions on the side of their house.
And houses.
Conveyance tax, which is when you sell your property, we're falling a bit behind, but Emery and I decided that's a seasonal type thing. Last year, we exceeded that level, so I do not think we should lose any sleep on that number. And as Tommy has already celebrated, Tommy is over budget by fifteen thousand dollars in the, what, fifth month of the year, so let's see how far we can go. And here's our, in the losem grant, which I shared a minute ago, we're expecting thirty, we have to apply for that, and we've already spent it. I've shared my discomfort with that, nevertheless, that is, that is the way it has been working. And if you notice, we budgeted a hundred and five thousand dollars to haul away our bulky waste, and to date, we've only spent twenty-five, so the, tell me the right phrase, the separation is saving us substantial amounts of dollars here. And public safety police, there's, as we chatted a moment ago there, there's, we've already collected forty-five thousand dollars of the twenty-two we spent, so I think we are, ah, we bill, let's do this together. We bill ninety dollars an hour, and we pay our constable sixty-five, so there is a spread in there, which is intended to cover the car, the gas, social security for the officer, and their pension, so seems a tad tight, if you ask me, but we will look at that.
Yes.
Alright, notice, here is an excitement of budgeting. If you remember, we put a new roof on the elementary school of a hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars. State of Connecticut said they would give us a hundred and thirty-seven, is that the right number for the grant? We have not received that either, we're working on it. It should not, we're getting better at, it should go into the grant fund and not go through our expenses. We are learning as we get older. And again, if, remember, we budgeted revenues of nineteen-three, nineteen-four. We anticipated calling upon our surplus to meet our expenditures, but we seem to be doing fine so far, both in revenues and expenses. Unless anyone has any questions, I'll suggest we're over the exciting part of the meeting.
Quick question on rental equipment, we may have talked about this, but with the new street sweeper, and we're collecting revenue from Chester, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
Is that going to go up subsequent to the new equipment, now that the expense-
I don't think so.
It's going to stay flat?
I don't think so. Are you negotiating anything, you're, where you're going to be in here a couple of days, you're not negotiating anything with Chester, so? If you were to look at the bottom part of the agenda that was sent to you, we have, are we still anticipating these to be the date, or they actually been filed with the town board?
No, I need approval from the board of finance.
Joyce has put recommended dates for our meetings next year, year two thousand twenty-four.
But-
We will continue to meet on the fourth Tuesday of every month, yes, ma'am?
Just, the only thing I want you to know is that in December, your meeting falls on Christmas Eve. So I put to be determined.
That's correct, I saw it, it's Christmas Eve, isn't it?
It's Christmas Eve, someone else will be busy.
Arguably, we do not meet in August, I think we did meet this year, so August is no meeting. We did meet on Valentine's Day.
We did.
A long Valentine's, a lot.
But I need my seat on Christmas Eve, I probably-
We've had that issue before, it did not go over well amongst those who love it, or claim to love it. But if you look at those dates, we're meeting on the third, the fourth Tuesday of every month, and we have, you will note that the meeting times have changed from historical seven-thirty to seven o'clock, unless anyone has objections.
Or following the course of a case of once over.
Immediately follow the select, wait, how, how are you going to phrase it? Seven, the earlier of seven o'clock or immediately following the selectmen's meeting?
Yeah, however you prefer, but I would think seven PM or immediately following the board of selectmen meeting would be-
And I did say that, didn't I?
Yes.
So when should everyone on the board of finance show up?
Seven.
Unless the board of selectmen meeting gets over earlier.
But you could, you can't start any earlier than seven if we post seven, because we have to open it to the public.
Goes later, okay.
Yeah, so they could go up at seven and-
Seven o'clock or immediately following the selectmen's meeting?
Correct.
I was thinking the selectmen have been ending their meetings early, we would start, but if we're not here, we can't do that.
No, and we couldn't anyway, if we post a time at seven, we can't start it earlier because we have to allow the public to be here at the time.
Okay, especially with you. Do we need an official vote on that, or do we just need, alright? Would anyone make a motion to accept the, the meeting dates as, as recommended? Make them first, thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of meeting from the fourth Tuesday of every month at seven o'clock? Thank you, all, all in favor, thank you, unanimous. Alright, does anyone have any other issues they would like to bring forward?
I do.
Are we, yes, ma'am?
I have an issue. On the salary study that we did with town pay, town finance, public document, you had sent us a email that said you had redacted the salaries from the email, from the study, excuse me, and that if anybody in town wanted to see the salaries, they could ask for it and they'd be shown the salaries. I had a great problem with that, remember I texted you and said, who was the "we", and you said it was you and Angus who did this?
Well, your question was, who asked to have these salaries removed from the study? It was Angus and I.
Sorry, that's what you answered.
So what do you disagree with, that Angus and I shouldn't have had it put into an appendix?
First, I had, I questioned whether or not you had the authority to redact salaries from public documents, so I went ahead and consulted a labor lawyer. I thought perhaps it was because the salaries were for town employees, but town employees are paid with taxpayers' money, so it's public information. And this lawyer told me that it was legal to do that, but that he found it inappropriate and unethical. And my question is, why was that decision made? And why wasn't it a conference amongst the whole board of finance to do that? One, when it was a public document, paid for by taxpayers' money, and taxpayers should be able to see everything and anything in there at any given moment. And second point, was that study released to the town?
No. My premise is, the second part, salaries, is for this board to use to make decisions, putting the budget together.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
The second part, the roadmap to addressing salaries is for this board's eyes, and the selectmen's eyes, putting our budget together. Not for public, not for citizens.
But the study was a public information document, so those salaries are part of the study.
Our attorney has gone in a different direction, which I'm uncomfortable with. Carol needs to meet with her, or Carol and I need to meet, she is under the impression, these are, these are personal-
She doesn't think it should be released.
She doesn't think it should be released.
Until Bud and I can meet with Jane Marsh, then we were, I was advised to meet with her before we release.
But how can you keep information that is publicly funded from the public?
Again, I think I would want to hold off until I've met with the town attorney before I answer that, because at this point, I will be speculating of, you know, if, if you can give me some time so we can meet, we called Jane yesterday, she was working on ordinance for us, so and then I was at a conference today, so perhaps Bud and I tomorrow or Thursday can meet with Jane, and then we'll have a better understanding of legally where she's coming from.
And just to follow up on that, and the original document we were given, since Cindy's a new board member here, I think she's entitled to the original one, correct? Not the edited one. So she's entitled to this one, that we all got, since she's a board member, since budget season's coming up. And there are other things that are missing between the original one and the second one, not just salaries. There's information in here that's missing. You can tell the font's different, it's still signed by Deb, the modified one, but this is Deb's original with her signature on it. The fonts aren't even the same. So someone typed this one up. So, number one, I think Cindy deserves a copy of this, the original one, that the taxpayers paid for, and number two, and I agree, you know, I understand if you have to meet with an attorney on it, but this is public information.
Yeah, I haven't even seen it, honestly.
There, there's, there's two different, this is the original, this is the modified version that we were sent.
Okay.
And there are things other than salaries that are missing in it, that are public information.
Haven't had time to look at it yet, or whatever.
I have also requested a copy and have not given it.
I would just be curious, if I may, in the interest of the townspeople, if they were to, not that they should ever have to do a freedom of information request, if they were to, at this point, which one would be released to them? And, and I know that's a hypothetical, but I would pose that to the attorney.
Okay, I was unaware that there are two sort of versions, it looks like, I haven't read it.
One's the original, that's what's modified.
I haven't read it yet, I know some groups got it and-
Other than the board of selectmen, at that time, the board of finance-
Board of selectmen, board of finance, I think, were the only two that got it. Board of selectmen, board of finance, I think were the only two that got it.
I think it was the original. I think it was a draft. There are a lot of discrepancies between these two.
Was it voted on and to be accepted as a document?
No.
No. There shouldn't have been any votes by the town people.
Correct.
So the townspeople.
But my concern is that we may not do any of these recommendations.
My question too, Bud, is why did this happen?
Why did what?
Why was information redacted from the original report?
My concept is that we will use the second document to make our decisions, board of selectmen, board of finance, board pair of budget.
And you didn't answer my question. Why was the information redacted in the first place?
For we could separate the document. There will be part used only by us and part given to the town. Is why we asked them to separate.
Is that for privacy reasons? You're hoping that people's salaries are public knowledge for people decided? Is it for a privacy concern?
The study was prepared for us to be able to make valid decisions. I didn't see it. I thought that there didn't seem to be any reason that everyone in town should have the ability to discuss everyone's potential salary.
But if your taxpayers' money is paying for everybody's salary, as a taxpayer, I have a right to know what everybody's salary is.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing with that. I question do they have the right to participate inside what your salary should be?
But that, that wasn't the question, what the salary should be. It would, my question was about the report. And why was information taken out of the report and separated? And I think your comment was if anybody wants to see it, they can ask. Well, if people don't know it's in there, why would they ask for it?
Well, again, you got the study. I, again, it is my impression that we will use the second part to make decisions at our, at our own pace. I would think that the report should be made public. It is our attorney that is putting a flag that it should not because we are discussing individuals and individual positions. And we have the right to use that for our own decision making.
So this report has not been let out to the town?
Other than the members of this board, these boards.
So the money we spent to make this report, to hire Deb Malardo to construct this report and interview and whatnot, again, paid for the tax, by the taxpayers, they're not going to see any of the results of it?
Well, Carol and I will look. I'm, I have always been, to your point, paid for by taxpayers. We have nothing to hide here other than do you want information that this board can use to make decisions that is not public information, that not everybody gets to see?
Why not?
My, my salaries and pay...
To me, we have a right to information to make our decision that does not have to be used by everybody in town.
I'm willing to bet if someone goes to the FOI commission and FOIs it, they're, they're going to get it.
It has been solicited FOI.
Already?
Yes.
The people have an interest.
And I, again, I have no problem, I believe, I agree. Everyone should see it, but we have a legal who says it should be held back.
I have a question. Um, you mentioned that you might not take any of the recommendations, um, in that salary study? I'm just curious as to why you wouldn't take any of the recommendations.
This board and the selectmen will put a budget together and will make decisions. Make decision every year on lots of things. That is one of them.
Did you, have you seen the report?
I, I have. I don't have a digital copy of it, but I, um, I did make an FOI request for it.
There are some portions of it that are just, I think, preposterous.
Well, in all honesty, I was concerned with my own, you know, so, um...
How understandable.
Very.
Is there a digital version of this report available?
Well, it was, it was emailed to us.
Okay, so I have asked twice for it and I've been told there's not a digital version. Uh, I would like a copy of this report, the original report.
Catherine, in all fairness and in all honesty, I do not have a digital report of it. I have...
So maybe you could help us, Bud, if you have a digital version?
Seems to be you're a selectman. You should have it as long as, as, right, and every other selectman should have it as well. You're involved in, you've been involved in the, uh, discussions, so selectmen have been involved, seems to be...
It's a question of how. Do you have a digital version that you can send me?
There, I, I believe there is confidential information here that should be shared amongst the selectmen and the Board of Finance. I, 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 I'm resistant if everyone in town should be able to discuss everybody's salary until the board of selectmen and board of finance put a budget together. That's my only lead is.
Two questions, two. I do have an electronic copy I have not received. I, I received a hard copy like Deb announced it. I haven't seen the redacted one with that.
I would say redacted, I'd say modified. That's, that's the correct terminology. Mine does have Deb's name on it and I don't know if Deb produced the second one. And that's my, if I prepare something and give it to my town hall and it's got my name on it and it's something that I typed and then it was modified by somebody else, whoever modified it is going to have to answer questions. And that flies in my town. I don't know what other towns that would fly in, but if I'm the author and I sign my name to a document that I produce, then whoever modifies it and signs my name has to be held accountable for modifying it.
My, my issues that I have is everyone's salary, all the taxpayers are paying everyone's salary. So they should be able to see what's in it. The problem that I have is they shouldn't see parts of the report, as Bud said, because we're going to be using this to possibly give people raises. Do we want townspeople to come in here and sit here and say, "I think that Carmelo deserves a $10,000 raise," or... That's the one part that I have a problem with. I have no problem showing salaries after they're done, starting salaries, but I don't feel that the public should be involved in what type of salary raises we are going to give if we are going to give a raise. My salary's been posted for 20 years since I've been in the office, so it's out there.
Well, the public won't be able to vary your decision. The boards will make the decisions.
Well, that's, that's what I'm hoping, Catherine. But if all of a sudden all this information gets out there and this report gets out there saying that Dwayne's entitled to a $5,000 raise, $10,000 raise, whatever it may be, people are going to come here and say, "I don't think Dwayne worked that," or whoever, whoever the employee may be.
Well, and the other side of that though too, Dwayne, she lists, Deborah, uh, Malardo, the one who did this study, lists the things that people do in their jobs. And I'm, Joyce, excuse me, but she does a ton of work.
Absolutely.
And all of the things she does in her job are listed. So if you're our taxpayer and you're reading the report and you're seeing what this individual does, you kind of make an educated decision on it, right?
No.
And as one more thing too, and as a former teacher, my salary was always available to the townspeople who paid my salary.
Exactly, all of them are. Anyone is in the public...
But all the salaries now are available. They're all right here in the budget.
But you can't pick and choose education for one position and then another, the modified version, education for another position's not even listed. It was cut out. That's not transparent.
All right, Mike, I agree. And I don't know where...
And that's not salaries.
I don't know where that copy came from, so I, I can't address that because I don't know.
But those are the kind of differences. And I went through and I compared them both. And like I said, one position, we talk about education requirements for this position. Another position, it was totally deleted. And that's not transparent. And the public paid for it and I agree, maybe we don't want them to influence because that's our job to decide the raises, but you can't pick and choose which educational requirements for positions are good in this copy, but not in this copy.
The only thing that I'm leaning towards is no different than in two years when the town contracts are up and we're in negotiations. Do you think all those negotiations should be public?
Isn't that different though because those are contract negotiations?
It's not because we're, we're all basically going to be negotiating raises for the staff of the town here. It's the same type of thing.
But, but we're using what Deb wrote to make that decision.
I realize that, Mike. But what I'm trying to say is do we want, do we want influence from the outside of, we don't think that this person's entitled this money. We think Joyce is entitled to the money. Do we want the public to be, have an input on that?
At the end of the day, we're the ones...
It's a different process.
At the end of the day, we're the ones who have to make that decision.
That's why we're elected. We're, we're elected to make these decisions.
So we have to tell them, "No, I'm sorry, but you've elected us and we as a group make the decisions."
And then they make the decision.
That's what I'm trying, that's what, that's what my point I'm trying to get across.
It's a tough thing to say to people, but it may have to be said 20 times. There may be a rush and then, then they, then they get it.
Deb being a professional in human resources for how many years? She's shared her resume. I'm assuming that she's done this more than once. She put that information in the report knowing it had the potential of going public, right? I can't imagine her intent was to keep this, so, I mean...
She didn't insult or degrade anybody in her report.
Correct, but I'm just saying that, so why would we want to hinder that communication with our public? And, and maybe Deb could be a good point of reference as well as you go through the next phase just because she's been doing this for a long time. She wrote that report assuming there was going to be some...
Public information.
Right. I'm assuming. She's done this for a while.
Right, and I just think if, when the, the second one was released, it shouldn't have her name on it because she didn't offer this one.
Wouldn't the process need to redact instead of modify?
Yeah.
If that was...
So, so we're, I didn't go through it. So there's actually modifications, not just...
Yes, there's things left out between the original document and this document.
Where did you get that? Because I don't know.
This was sent to us in an email.
I sent it out. I guess at a demand I sent it out there.
So we don't know if Deb did that, is what you're saying.
Deb didn't do this. Her name, like I said, she didn't type this, number one, you know, the font's different. If you're going to do a document, why are you changing the font?
Was that the one I sent to you?
Yes. So the font's different, so it's a big clue that someone else typed it, not Deb. Her original document, she signs her name to it, okay, and types her name. This one, it just got her name typed on the bottom. She didn't say the original one was the draft. She said, "This is what you guys paid for, here you go." We got this one. It's got her name on it. Doesn't say Deb, document number two to be released. So this was typed up by somebody else and released. And if you go through them, and I can be more than happy to go through, there aren't picking and choosing of this person's education for this position, but then when it goes to other positions, it's all cut out and left out. And I, I don't think that's transparent.
So is this document going to be released to the public?
Again, I have always wanted it released, but based on the same premise, we have been told to hold it by our attorney. We'll meet with our attorney. I have no problem letting it go. And certainly as a selectman, you have every right. Everyone in this room has a copy of that report.
So can I have an original make a copy tonight? I have a question, yes.
So I'm new to the process, so please, it's, I mean, we can scan that tonight, right, and send it to the, the selectman needed to make decisions going for the original.
You know, I started last Tuesday.
Yeah.
And this has been a hot topic since I got here. I was, you know, I was instructed by the town attorney to meet with her before it gets released. So I have not seen it. You have all seen it before I got sworn in to be in this position. So you all have, you know, laid eyes on it and have more discussion about it than I have. I feel the same way Bud does. As soon as the town attorney says, "Release it," then I'm, I, I agree. It should be some sort of public document. I just don't know what she wants to talk to us about first. So I don't want to, I'm trying to follow proper procedure.
But you yourself could get a copy of it. And I myself could get a copy because we are selectmen.
Of course. But I, again, I want to, Jane, to see what, what the...
And when it's sitting on a table, not should have a copy.
They all got it because they were some meeting on a floor stand.
I don't have it. It's changed, Josh.
And I don't know what he has. I don't know. I don't know. I don't have a digital one.
Certainly you should get one.
I, I swear. I don't think...
You'll get one. Are you voting on getting one? But yeah, now all members of this table who will participate in making decisions should have a copy.
I don't have a hard copy of that one.
And if someone challenges the attorney's decision, why are they going to go to court and argue? That's going to be...
I don't have it on me. I'll take...
No.
Shouldn't the Freedom of Information Commission be engaged in the process of...
I guarantee you a comment, it's a document.
So because attorneys are specialists in a whole bunch of areas, maybe we should engage the Freedom of Information Commission on whether or not it's releasable. So that, because attorneys are training on this. Respectfully, they're specialists in many fields. Freedom of Information Commission are experts in just this field. Perhaps we can engage them and they're at our service.
So we're...
At the end of the day, these two ladies should have copies. Oh, absolutely.
Three ladies, Carol needs one too.
Three ladies, that's exactly.
Sure, I have a copy. I just haven't read it yet. And I thought I'd give Jane first.
People that are on these boards should...
Certainly everyone here should have it because they will participate in making decisions.
It's just a salary study. I don't understand.
And we'll meet with the attorney to see whether it should go any deeper.
Can I, the Freedom of Information, or is that outside of my lane?
I, again, I'm a bit uncomfortable allowing everyone in the town of Deep River to participate in, here's the kind of, here's what they pay in Bridgeport, et cetera. I believe that should be hilt and used by us to make our decisions. That's why I am respectful of keeping some of it to ourselves.
Basically, I was underpaid by $25,000.
The debt doesn't seem to be universal.
Anybody in the town can see that and maybe they'd say, "Oh, she did a good job for pretty cheap." But, I mean, it doesn't really matter in the whole scheme of things because I think, I mean, that's what the position pays in other places. Like, how does that really affect me as a worker except that I then come to you guys and demand more money? So, I mean, it didn't say anything except exactly what Carmelo said, all my description. I did da, 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 you know.
This is pretty common when we go for contract negotiations. Our union goes out and says, sees what West Hartford's getting, Manchester's getting. It's, it's a common, common study. It's not like it's a big secret.
Right, and I wouldn't have cared if the people saw the part.
Yeah, it is what it is.
Exactly.
People are paying. People get to know.
I, I agree with you that because again, it's no different than when we, the Board of Education. Board of Education does do the same thing. But here you're dealing with a handful of people and you know, okay, town clerk, tax clerk, there's names where during normal negotiations, you're just getting an overview of what the community is paying.
Remove the names.
But you go on that state and county website, you see where Officer White was made last year.
My name is literally on the website with how much I make and...
Funtrupunefacts.com.
Yeah, yeah. Or some like... You can find it, so I mean, like I said, it's...
And, and to that point, excuse, I mean, the town, I mean, the state employees are on the website because FOI has already agreed that it is releasable information, so therefore, yes.
I'm just going to make a copy of that.
And...
You just make a copy and scan it.
And I, I see what you're saying, but it's more than the salaries. It's education was listed for one position but cut out of another one. Why? Who made that decision?
I can't comment on that because I don't have that second.
And like I said, I'd like to know who authored the second document. Who sat down and who typed this?
That's all I mean because I can't type.
Someone's got to be accountable for typing this one.
They must have just cut and pasted and changed the font. I thought, who would retype the thing?
I don't know, but if you go through both of them, there are, there are some differences.
Isn't it possible that on a sign...
Came to me from Angus with a note from Deb. So I'm leaning towards Deb created it, is why it came to me, but...
But she did what, the second task?
Angus said it to me, Deb said it to him. It was attached to an email that she had sent to him.
And I believe that's how it came.
Oh, so maybe it's two versions.
I believe that's how it came.
So in fact, she changes her font again, but it is an excellent point. I do not know. Again, I think this board's leaning towards giving all of it away until the attorney says no.
I don't know how the original documents got here. I'm assuming when Deb came here, um, to speak to, um, the Board of Finance in regards to the salary study, copies were made at that time, so I'm assuming she had the original. Why I'm saying I do not have a digital copy, I do not have one. Why I'm saying I do not have a digital copy, I do not have one, and I am assuming that that edited version came from Deb. I don't know what people are saying, but I, I do not believe that anyone here made that document and signed her name. I, I believe she did it.
But she was asked to do that.
Correct, but I'm saying, no one here did it, no employees here did it.
And the asking was you and Agus, correct?
Yeah, I just...
And again, it was our intention to create two different documents, one that would be released to anyone who wanted to see it, and the second would be used by us to make decisions.
And neither has been released?
None has been released, based on the recommendation of our attorney, which is an overused defense in today's world.
Well, I just wanted to be echo on record that I was very uncomfortable with that whole process, particularly because it's a publicly financed document and it should be available to all the public in its original form, not somebody's edit of it.
Even Deb's edits?
Deb edited because she was asked to edit.
To separate the two. Remember, there is a whole slew of attachments with job descriptions on it, which go to your point, the job descriptions have all the educational requirements, the fact that you didn't include it in the report.
They do in the original one, they're missing in the second one.
Could I see your second one for just a minute?
All right, Board of Finance wants this report to go public, first one, not the second one, subject to the approval of the attorney.
The first one is the complete one? Just so I'm understanding? And the second one is the modified version?
Or the secondary version from Deb, apparently.
Okay.
I did speak with Deb, I, I had a telephone call with her, and if I could remember correctly, and this was a while ago, so I, please, I am trying to remember correctly, I believe she said that she was asked to change some of it, and she changed it and sent it to Agus.
By the town attorney?
We didn't get into that, so, all I'm saying is that I...
The person on the grassy mall?
Yeah, I just, I don't know how that came about, but I believe that there's an email, there must be an email from Deb attaching that document.
Okay. Release it unless the attorney says no, and I assume we should argue against it.
Okay, I'll talk to you after the meeting.
It has raised, just amongst us, it has raised a higher at the Water Risk Control Authority. If you remember, that is not particularly flattering to the Water Risk Control Authority.
Because the risk is if the town attorney says no, and someone wants to take them to court, through FOI, then that's going to be an incurred cost.
There would be a complete FOI commission, and probably, in all...
I would assume the town attorney would be aware of that, that if, if she says you can't release this document, and some resident says, hey, wait a minute, my tax money paid for this document, I want to see it, it's freedom of information, and I'm going to sue the town, and then you're right, we're going to incur costs to defend the town, the town attorney's position, or lose to it.
Usually FOI, usually FOI is very convenient about what can be released.
Free of charge, they'll tell us.
Hornet's nest.
All right. It should be released unless there's some defending reason by the attorney not to, so, we want it released, is the way I'm reading the room.
Cindy, your recommendation is we go to FOI to get advice, rather than incur expenses...
I would not want to usurp anything that anybody is saying about consulting with the attorney, but we have the FOI Commission for that reason, with the state, who are the ruling body on these type of documents that is at our disposal, or used, if you will, that, why not? I mean, it's a phone call away, it's a phone call away, and it's free, and they're the experts. As a new person here, I would just, one, say it's releasable, just in my experience, and two, to be sure, FOI would make the ruling, and then let the attorney know what those findings are, and that it's...
And would that supersede the town attorney's decision? Whatever, let's assume she's going to say no, would the Freedom of Information supersede that?
I would ask the attorney if that attorney wants to stand on that hill with that, because, again, they're experts in multiple fields, but is FOI one of those fields? Is the release of public documents, which I would say that that is a public document, is that something that the attorney would want to absolutely rule on and stand by that? My money, pun intended, is on the fact that it's releasable to everyone who paid for it, the townspeople, in the original form. Thank you.
All right. Address, we'll lean towards and we'll push the attorney to make this thing available to anyone who wants to see it, right? We're not putting this out on the internet or anything like that, people have to come and ask for it, right?
I mean, it could go on the internet if somebody wanted to, not to share it.
You can put a fire study out there, you know, put everything we do out there on our town website.
No, I'm not saying that we need to put it out there, but I'm saying somebody could, if they received it, it would be their right to do so, if they wanted to.
They could share it.
They could share it.
What else would take it on social media?
I'm not saying it's the Board of Finance, but it's certainly their right to do so.
That's the risk you take when you complete a private salary study.
A public salary.
Right.
Study.
All right, we're back to, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Now, first, now, all meetings.